All right, I will call to order the council meeting October 12th, 2021 at 7:31. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
All right, roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dearherd.
Here.
Alder Hert.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strasman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Present.
Alder Wielder.
Here.
You have a quorum here.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is public appearances, non-agenda items, appointments. Uh, the first thing is public hearing on the mayor's proposed 2022 operating budget, so open the public hearing. I know that we have Linda Brewer here online to speak to this. Linda, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, hi, good evening. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'm here tonight because the recommendation to increase our foresters position by 20% was not included in the mayor's 2022 budget proposal. The current budget for 60% staff position for city of Pittsburgh Forester no longer meets the needs required by ordinance title four, City Services, Chapter 54, Parks, Recreation and Forestry. And this is where the role of forester is defined, and these are her duties. Um, one, there has been a substantial increase in Pittsburgh's urban service area, and this will increase again with the upcoming addition of Town of Madison. Growth in land development and urban service area has increased work responsibility beyond that of a 60%, 60% position. Two, Wisconsin's Emerald Ash Bor crisis has increased workload substantially. This work continues to increase as trees die. Some trees can be treated for a limited time, and this is being done. All ash trees will get the disease. Limbs begin to fall, and these are canopy trees dying. Again, workload exponentially increases with the addition of Town of Madison into our urban service area. And the workload is already beyond what the position allows. Three, while the mayor is looking to add a part-time position for stormwater management, the most effective way to avoid excessive water problems is by planting trees. And this can be witnessed in the quarry hill city park planning, um, which has been done by our forester. Um, she is both an, um, an arborist and a naturalist. Trees, shrubs, vegetation substantially impact excessive water damage. We have an extraordinarily skilled individual professional who can assess and has and plan for this, and that can be done and has to be done according to ordinance throughout the city. So the urban forester naturalist position has remained at 60% for actually a very long time, since, um, it has been unchanged since 2008. There was a recommendation to increase this position to 100% when Anna took this position in 2016, and there's been repeated recommendation by department heads to increase at sunset time, including this year. Um, while the position has stagnated at 60%, the size of Pittsburgh has not. The, in the future, we will be, it will be extremely important to protect plant, um, to protect and plant trees as part of our, our infrastructure. And it will be essential to plan for tree preservation and plantings in the first tier of designs that are being made and approved for our parks, for public service areas, and for new land developments. So I ask that the 20% increase to our forester position be added back to the department budget for 2000, for 2022. Documented needs and current responsibilities as defined by, again, by our city ordinance title four, City Services, Chapter 54, require, do require at this time
All right, Linda.
increase to this position minimally by 20%.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. And I believe Sue, also you're, come up, you're ahead, you're next. Do you want me to hand these out, people as well?
Hi, uh, Sue Easterday, 2731 Osmondson Road. Uh, she didn't mention it herself, but Linda Brewer, who just spoke, is chairperson of the Tree Advisory Committee. Um, and I could have saved myself a lot of time by just coming up here and saying what, what she said. Uh, and on one side of what I've handed out our short remarks, the other side is something for consumption later. I will not force you to listen to me read all that, but it's important. Um, I began an unexpired term on the Parks Commission two years ago, and the term ends in spring of 2022. And for the past few months, I've been the commission chair. Uh, the handout is the most recent Urban Forestry Report, and that's part of the packet that we review monthly. Now, I noticed it says October. Um, it's the report for our October meeting, which is always the first Thursday. That's the September work. Uh, so it's not a premonition. It's work that's been done. Uh, over the past two years, I've observed, observed the required work in urban forestry has grown consistently. Every department matters, and every line in the budget is important to those who work in or volunteer on behalf of that department. In the case of, uh, the forestry naturalist position, the workload accomplished monthly includes facilitating a dedicated group of volunteers who accomplish many hours more work for at least six months of the year. Um, in my several years volunteering in the natural areas of Pittsburgh's parks, I've noticed that the number of tasks assigned to this position has grown exponentially. And I believe it's time to honor the request of our Parks Director to increase this position accordingly by adding the additional eight hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do not believe we have anyone else for the public hearing. So Julie, you have a question? What's that?
Can I do a public hearing, not related to budget, but to, no agenda? Can I do something?
For an agenda, okay, well, I'll get that in a second.
Okay.
We're doing the, yeah.
No agenda?
Yeah, non-agenda, yep. All right. So nothing else on the operating budget? So see nothing else. I will close the public hearing, and now we're still on non-agenda items. Uh, Julie, do you have a non-agenda item?
Yeah. So, uh, so what I want to mention is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month dated back to October 90, 90, 85. This is when the first organized movement to bring attention to the danger of breast cancer occurred in the United States. Since then, campaigns to educate the public about this disease have continued to thrive and multiply. October serves as a reminder for women to be screened in the hope that by doing so, early detection will lead to more positive outcome in the fight against breast cancer. Breast cancer is the most commonly occurring cancer in women and the second most common cancer overall. According to the World Cancer Research Fund, there were more than 2 million new cases worldwide in 18, in 2019. Cancer is a social illness in the sense that it affects the entire family as well as friends. Therefore, the total number of people influenced by breast cancer is much larger. So here, I can, I give you a handful of ways you can help. One is rally and screening everyone. You can make a donation to provide life-saving mammograms to women in need. Rally in serving everyone. Make a donation to support patient navigator who specialize in serving a risk population. Rally in supporting everyone. Spread the word about Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Share the story on how you and, and or a loved one have been affected by this breast cancer. And proudly wear a pink ribbon during October Oreo run. So I want to, I want to acknowledge all the people in my life that, that suffer from this disease, um, friends and family, so. Um, people, women, be, uh, use your time, I, to screen, and I usually do it by my birth month. It's a, it's a mandatory for me to have my mammogram and my other, um, screening, so. Uh, I hope women in Pittsburgh will follow this. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And actually, I was going to talk about this in the mayor's report, but seems like I can mention it now. Uh, at City Hall, I did have staff actually put a pink kind of film over the light, over the entrance to City Hall in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Unfortunately, the lights aren't working tonight, so you can't see it, um, but it is something I'll talk a little bit more of my mayor's report, but I wanted to start that, uh, this month. Uh, my mother actually had breast cancer about 12, over 20 years ago, and thankfully caught it early and no long-term effects, but I know it affects a lot of people and a lot of people's loved ones, so, thank you. All right, um, nothing else, uh, non-agenda items, so I will go to the consent agenda. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
Sent by Randy. Anything that someone wants to take out of the consent agenda and do separately? See none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is approved. Then, next up, I believe, is Administrator's Report.
Good evening, everyone. A few items on the Administrator's Report. Uh, tomorrow I will be attending along with Mayor Richardson, the Hispanic Heritage Luncheon at the Manona Terrace. Uh, as a reminder to Alders, uh, budget amendments are due on Thursday by 4:30 PM. Uh, please send them to Misty in the, on the form that has been provided, uh, in Word format, so that it can be, uh, modified, uh, as necessary by Misty. And obviously, if you are working on any amendments, a heads up to Misty would be greatly appreciated. There is a meeting in regards to the Cheryl Drive, uh, project, one of the stormwater projects, uh, tomorrow uh, at 6:00 PM for interested parties. Uh, there is a virtual and an in-person option for that meeting. Other meetings that are forthcoming, uh, Edgewood College has, uh, is in the early stages of proposing, uh, an athletic complex uh, near the intersection of, uh, Seminole Highway and Lacy Road. They are having neighborhood meetings, um, at the Hop House over on Sub Zero Parkway. The first meeting is October 28th at 6:00 PM, and the second meeting is, uh, November 18th, and also at 6:00 PM. Um, I need to take a look at my email here from, uh, Economic Development Director Mike Zimmerman. Uh, the other item that I have, uh, from him is the Pittsburgh Biz Outdoors. Is this Thursday, uh, from 4:00 to 6:00 at Funk's Pub. And that covers, uh, his items. And then finally, uh, two more items for me. Fire Department is having their open house event on the road this year. Uh, tomorrow, the 13th, is their first event, uh, at 2301 Traceway Drive, the Nine Springs Golf Course, uh, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And then the second event is next week, uh, October 20th, at Hugo James Town Park, also from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And then I also can provide a redistricting update, uh, during the redistricting committee section. Any questions at all?
Thank you, Gabriel.
Could you send those dates in an email by chance? I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, you're talking fire, open house, Edgewood College, uh, anything else?
Those are the two main ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll get those to council.
All right, see nothing else. Uh, we can move on, though I would like to ask someone to amend the agenda to first move up H2, the Resolution 17521. We have a couple people online that think it'd be nice if we could get them on their way earlier, if someone liked to.
I move to amend the agenda to move H2 up under the Administrator's Report.
Second.
Sent by Jay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is approved. And hopefully, they're paying attention online right now and can join us. Uh, hi, Mike. All right, uh, so someone on CETA, first of all, can make a motion. I'm not sure who wants to do a motion here. Jim, you want to make a motion?
Move approval of R-175-21, approving a workforce housing endowment program feasibility study completed by HNA Advisors LLC for a rent-to-own townhome project.
Second.
Sent by Randy, I heard first. Did Planning Commission approve? We did. Uh, did CETA approve?
Yes.
Yep. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right. I don't know if Mike, you want to introduce it, or you want Mike, I guess, Mike or Mike? Mike Zimmerman, I think is gonna maybe introduce it and then throw it to Mike Harrigan.
Mike Zimmerman, Economic Development Director. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, we have, uh, Mike Harrigan and Steve Afflebach from HNA Advisors. Uh, CETA and the Housing Advisory Committee and other city committees have been working with them on a rent-to-own housing endowment pilot program uh, to address kind of the missing middle in homeownership opportunities here in, in Pittsburgh. So I think, uh, this is a unique, novel approach, uh, to not only encourage homeownership, but also, uh, help individuals and families, uh, build wealth and hopefully generational wealth through a program like this. So I'll turn it over to Mike and Steve to take you through the program objectives and parameters, and then the financial model, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. One other thing I should mention is that the funds for this program would come from, uh, the TID Housing, uh, program. In the future, if we keep TID 4 and TID 6 open for that additional year for, uh, to use the increment for our housing fund and affordable housing fund, that's where the dollars would come from for this program. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and Steve.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thank you, Mayor, and it's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I'd just like to also thank everyone that participated, uh, with us on this project, and, and particularly the ones that, uh, responded to the survey that we used to help, uh, refine the model and the plan that we had developed. Tonight, uh, Steve Afflebacher and I are going to sort of tag team through the PowerPoint presentation, which I understand, uh, will be loaded shortly for us. Uh, Steve will start out and, and give a little bit of an overview, and, and then I will talk, uh, through specifics as relates to some of the numbers associated with this, uh, with this model and with this game plan, and wrap it up with, with some questions, so. With that, Steve, if you'd like to begin.
Sure, if you could head to the next slide there, please. Um, thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, we've, uh, enjoyed our, uh, discussions with the, the city, uh, CETA, the Planning Commission, Housing Advisory Commission. Uh, as you know, what we're looking at is, is, um, of workforce housing. And, uh, we've developed, uh, Mike and I, uh, after having, uh, between us, uh, probably somewhere around 80 years of public finance experience, this rent-to-own concept where, uh, individuals would rent, and then there would be equity developed that would create a situation where they, and in the report, we've assumed conventional financing can take that out and own the facility. Uh, we've talked with the city about this, and our overriding consideration in designing this program is the limit to housing to no more than 30% of their income. Uh, so that, uh, when someone is renting, as well as when they're, uh, owning the unit, that their, uh, objective is, is that 30% is the maximum that they're paying for housing, which is, uh, a, a standard within the industry. So i- in order to get started, we needed to, to figure out what we were going to be looking at in terms of our definition of affordable housing. And with your assistance, uh, we'd had a survey with the council, CETA, the Housing Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission, as very, as well as various staff members. And what we came back with then is a profile that we used for our feasibility report. Uh, that profile can be changed, should the council or, or, uh, like to do that, but that was the basis for our, uh, examination and preparing this feasibility report. What that profile indicated is, is that there was a void within the city for workforce housing in the 80 to 100% of a median counting income. In other words, that would be the, the range of income that we'd be looking at. There are a lot of programs for individuals less than that, but there, that really is a, an area that, uh, doesn't have a, a lot of programs that would make it available. Keep in mind that someone at 80% of the median income for Dane County would, uh, for two owners would be making just under $18 an hour uh, to get to that 80% number. So that would be the, the income that we used, and we would envision then that the development would be a mix of those 80 to 100%. The development concept then that was agreed to, that was a consensus of the survey, was a 10-unit townhouse-style construction. Uh, we had a cost estimate based on updating and discussing with various builders, uh, the current, uh, costs. And as you know, there's been quite an increase, almost a 30% increase in building costs since, this, this spring due to the shortage and various elements of, of, uh, building homes. Our, our current estimate in the feasibility report is 332,000 for, for a unit, which would consist then of a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, 100, 1,400-square-foot, uh, unit with a two-car garage attached. So that's the development that we'd envisioned, 10 units with the, with 10 units of that size. Uh, the concept then would be that the CDA would be involved. They would be the facilitator, which would mean that they would build, uh, rent to the qualified tenants. There would be a qualified management company that would be selected. And in the basis of our report, then, based on the assumptions we've made in the report, that between four to 10 years would be when the individuals, depending upon where their adjusted gross income, with 100% of adjusted gross income, it's four years. With 80%, it's 10 years, that they'd be in a position to use conventional financing and buy the unit. Now, we did have discussions also with three financial institutions. Uh, they certainly are looking at other programs for first-time homebuyers, which may shorten up that period, but we did not factor that into the feasibility, uh, report that we've prepared, uh, that you, that you have in front of you. In addition, uh, as we designed the concept, we thought it was important that, uh, the tenants have some, uh, at-risk investment, and so we had a minimum equity contribution on their part of $5,000. And in turn then, uh, as been discussed, the city would utilize some of the, uh, TID monies, uh, for the extension of the district to bridge the gap between what the tenants could afford as 30% of their income and what was necessary then to support the project. Uh, based on our analysis, uh, we believe that it's feasible for the city to recoup, um, almost 95% of its initial investment, and then some additional, uh, investment after that that we'll define on subsequent slides. And that those monies would create an endowment program so that the funds would be available in future, uh, to continue this, uh, similar types of housing, and would be returned then, under the concept that we've developed. So it's, it's not one and done, but it's a sustainable endowment program that would generate additional developments. Uh, if you could move to the next slide, please. In our analysis, uh, there is a detailed report that, uh, is attached. Uh, in terms of the conclusions then, as I mentioned, we determined that the project was feasible. Uh, if, we did, uh, identify because of the increased costs that we would need to have a minimum, uh, family income of about $74,000. Uh, that ends up being for a family of three, about 83% of what the adjusted gross income is. Uh, we've recommended a $200,000 grant may be necessary so that all the 80 to 100% that would qualify for the grant that would be involved in, in this. And as we talked about, that, there would be the four-to-10-year period, uh, that would be then when the rent to own, the rent would be converted to the ownership that would take place. Uh, we've, uh, also identified in the model then that, uh, there would be a management company, and that those tenants, uh, would be really, uh, screened to make sure that they have the, the ownership mentality that's necessary for a successful program. And I think the, that the, uh, development framework that's been identified by the city is one that is consistent with other developments in the area, and one that would stand the test of time was, as a, as a consideration in terms of identifying the size and scope of the project. Uh, with that then, uh, if you could turn to the next slide, please. We identified, uh, various, uh, risk factors. Uh, the report that we have there, uh, has a detailed explanation of those risk factors. There's nine of them that we've identified to date. Uh, the committees, uh, were very helpful in making sure that we, uh, stress-test this to see what would happen with additional, uh, higher interest rates. Also, uh, identifying then, uh, what would happen, uh, with the various fluctuations in, in programs that have identified. We'd be happy to comment more on these risk factors and mitigating factors, uh, should there be time or a question that's necessary. So that provides an overview of what we've looked at in the feasibility report, and now I'd like to turn it over to Mike, uh, for the next slide, where we can talk specifically about some numbers to give you a feel for the, the, the costs and how the program would work from a dollars and cents standpoint. Mike?
Okay, thanks, Steve. This is a slide that outlines the sources and uses, uh, for the overall program. Uh, on the top, we have identified a total cost for the 10-unit project of a little over 3.3 million, 3,324,000, to be specific. Uh, within that total number, um, uh, a million, 200,000 dollars would come from various sources of cash, predominantly tax, the tax increment district, uh, once the district is closed, making those dollars available. Uh, 820,000 would come from, from the TID, all of which would be projected to be recouped eventually and repaid, uh, back to the, uh, CETA in order to replicate the program again. Uh, this program assumes that each tenant would come in with a minimum of $5,000, uh, of equity of their own. It would be at risk, and they would be looking at, at that as a potential, uh, loss, if they were to walk from the program voluntarily. Uh, there are additional costs that would be covered by the TID that would not be recovered. And then we also factored in, uh, if it can be made available, like $200,000 grant, specifically to help the folks on the lowest end of the income levels of, of the program. In terms of costs, there's a much more detailed, uh, breakdown of this on page 11 of the full report. Uh, but, uh, uh, we was, we don't know the exact site at this point. Uh, it would be helpful to know that at some point down the road, because we can refine those costs. We've assumed a cost of acquisition. Uh, the construction costs, you can see, are again, more specifically detailed, and they do include, uh, other costs, including, uh, uh, your fees and the parkland dedication requirements, so on and so forth. Uh, so all of that is, is a part of the, of, of the equation. It boils down to about $332,000 per unit. This slide is a slide that compares, uh, different, uh, levels of, uh, income participation. And we start out at the top of the slide with the cost per unit. And within that, uh, per unit, uh, that's going to be paid for, 332,000, 245,000 would be, in, in the case of the, on the left side, at, at 80% of median family income homeowner. And on the far right side, under example four, is 100%, assuming 100%. Using, I'm not going to throw all four of these, but just looking at the one for the 80-percenter, uh, your mortgage would be about 245,000 after we apply the tenant equity of 5,000. The reimbursable portion of TID that would be advanced to help provide the additional equity to make sure that the mortgage cost, along with the other, uh, costs of homeownership, didn't exceed that 30% of the, uh, homeowner's income. Uh, there's 30, 13,000 non-reimbursable TID expenses, and then the, the TID grant, which is applied. Uh, as you can see, for that 80% a, uh, owner, over a period of time, and this will be, uh, shown more specifically in the next slide, it takes 10 years for them to get to the point of being, convert to, uh, a, uh, a mortgage. Uh, excuse me, to, to, to a conventional mortgage. This particular slide is showing the, uh, uh, cash flow over time. And, uh, if we look at the top, we have assumptions included, which include the, uh, assumed inflationary or appreciation value of 2% over time of the project. We assume wage growth and, and a growth of about 2%. And so, we start out with the median family income in Dane County, which is currently $82,800. So 80% of that, in our first column, is only 74,240. And if we want to only use 30% of that for housing, that means they could only apply $22,000 of that annual income to housing. From that number, we back out the other costs that they would have to pay, which include the condominium fee, a payment in lieu of taxes for the period of time that the CDA would, or Community and Economic Development Authority would own the project. Uh, they would still be paying, uh, a payment to the city for its share of the property tax. Insurance, management fees, utilities, so on. Uh, that leaves a net available income from mortgage of 12,000. If you divide that on a monthly basis, it's $1,051 a month. Assuming a, a, a mortgage of 3.2% for 30 years, that would be $927 a month, leaving a balance of about $124 a month, which is included over time, that cash flow grows. And you can see each year, uh, as we move through time, how that would work. Uh, if you want to move to the next slide. Now, this slide is intended to show what happened. Uh, this slide is intended to show what happens uh at the closing at the end of that tenth year. Uh, because of appreciation and value of that two percent per year, in ten years, that you that same unit is there, we we projected to be worth of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we would need to repay the the uh loan off uh that would be outstanding. That would be a remaining of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that would leave the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in equity. And uh, uh, we have the uh monthly rent surplus that leaves two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for to be distributed, yet to be distributed. Uh, seventy-four thousand of that would be applied to the uh twenty percent portion of the down payment in order to keep their mortgage at at thirty percent of their income. There would be an additional thirty percent applied to the seventy-six thousand, which would get eventually repaid in the CDA, CDA. Uh, and upfront, we repay that eighty-two thousand and we have a ten thousand dollar balance. So a total of ninety-two thousand gets repaid. So we're showing the cash flow at the uh at the closeout at the tenth year. Next slide. So we thought it would be useful to see uh what the benefits to the city would be and what the benefit to the homeowner is as a part of this entire process. Uh, the city benefits from this by virtue of the fact that you would end up with a uh, a project would end up with a taxable value of three million seven hundred and nine thousand dollars at the end of the tenth year. Uh, ultimately, uh, a hundred percent of that uh tid acqu- allocation for equity of a eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars gets repaid. Uh, the residual equity of a hun- uh additional ten thousand dollars per unit would also be repaid. And then uh, that leave, that that adds up to nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars is coming back to the CDA. At some point down the road, there's an additional eighty-five that would come back in uh because of the uh additional funds that were advanced that would be paid at the time of the second sale to the uh by the homeowner. The homeowner gets a a home worth three hundred and seventy thousand, of which they walk, they they have a seventy-four thousand dollar uh equity stake at at that point in time. Uh, so it's a wealth, it's an opportunity for the homo- the individual to build wealth as part of the process as well. Next slide, and I'm going to ask Steve to then talk through uh some of the issues that came up that were addressed and resolved by the by CDA uh as part of our our discussions.
Yes, thanks, Mike. Uh, CDA had uh discussed some of the open ended questions and in the discussions that they had. Uh, we wanted to report the conclusions because it was helpful for us to uh incorporate that into the the feasibility study, at least at this point. And so uh, there's four open ended questions. The discussion was what happens if a tenant leaves early. Uh, the consensus was is that if the tenant leaves for a life changing event, they'd be allowed to exit with their five thousand dollars and any appreciation, provided there is appreciation, if there's a gain and and however, there would need to be a qualified tenant that had moved into the individual unit. The following question, open ended discussion question was what happens to the equity distribution? Uh, Mike had just gone through, you you saw the twenty, the the goal is to achieve twenty percent equity to be able to use that equity for conventional financing. Uh, for those that are uh at a hundred percent, that works and there's no additional dollars that are necessary to support them. For those at the eighty percent, you saw that there was an additional dollar amount that was necessary to keep their income uh pay their housing uh costs at thirty percent of their income. Uh, what was discussed is is that twenty percent equity should be retained by the tenant as their equity, but anything up and above that would be uh repaid then to the to the CDA uh at the time then that the uh the individual unit was sold or at the end of the mortgage, which would be thirty years. Uh, an additional question came up in that what happens at the end when it's sold to a uh 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 affordable housing tenant, but then they sell the unit, should there be something on there that requires it to continue to be affordable housing? Uh, when the discussions we had with bankers and the the financial uh the the builders, they all thought that the, you know, any sort of a covenant would negatively impact uh the resale of that and and had recommended not incorporating it. However, two members of that uh were both on, one on the Housing Authority and one on CDA had asked that we examine that further, potentially the possibility of a land trust or restrictive covenants. Uh, we indicated that we we could do that. We developed a separate proposal and provided that to the city, should the city wishes to explore that open ended question further and wanted to see if that possibility exists of trying to create uh some uh some strings attached so it continues to be affordable uh workforce housing. Last, then, uh, discussion of grants, should they be targeted? Uh, the thought was is that they be targeted uh equally across the program if if in fact those grant funds are able to be targeted under that under that manner. So that will, those were the open ended questions that we discussed in in the uh the uh uh direction we've gotten from CDA. Last, then, on the last, the last page, uh, I guess, as we've indicated, that we believe the project is feasible. Uh, should the council wish to proceed uh in accepting the report, the next step would go to phase two, which would then be to identify a site specifically and also identify a builder and a uh company that could manage the property to be able to reexamine then the uh feasibility report we have and really dive into that and fine tune that uh to come back with you to say, this is what we believe can happen based on a specific site, a specific builder and a specific management company. So that's a a general overview. Uh, we believe the concept is feasible and we'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions or comments? Dave?
Uh, first question, thank you. Very, very thorough analysis. I think what's missing in there, you're you're going to need a full time accountant just to be tracking this all the time and that cost, I think, is missed. Question I'll ask, um, you know, the most successful thing maybe in the history, certainly in the history of the United States and getting people uh into housing is Habitat for Humanity. Um, why won't just having Habitat do a project like this be in our in our best interest? And we're not in the middle of it. I, again, I'm I'm ignorant of these things, but I do contribute to Habitat. We have a large successful, you know, uh, section of of my district, you know, that started Habitat Homes and just wonder why we wouldn't want to go down, explore that, that option. So. But you guys, you, again, I'm a novice at this, so please, please educate me.
Mike or Steve, do you want to answer that?
Sure, I I can start. Um, I I think Habitat's a great program. Uh, typically what we see is is is, and I'll use the 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 terminology one and done, it's done and then uh, there isn't uh the ability to get dollars back to a fund to be able to recreate what's going on and what we think about this uh concept is 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 two things. One is that we're ensuring that they're we they'll be using thirty percent of their income towards housing. It's not going to be more than that. Uh, and so uh, it the 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 program is designed so that we target so that thirty percent of their income is used for housing, both in the rental phase as well as the ownership phase. Second, that dollars are coming back to the city, uh, that we're allowing them to build the equity so that they in turn can buy the unit and then repay the city to be able to do this again, so that the funds can be recycled, um, as long as we can uh sell the units and get the dollars back that can be recycled uh in indefinitely then over a longer period of time. So over time, we believe that you'll have a greater impact on uh creating units then in this for the uh for workforce housing. Mike, anything to add?
Well, only on the uh the accounting uh angle, uh, that was a great point about the tracking this. Um, I think we have that uh considered as part of the role that the management company would play in this. Uh, in our full report, we talked about uh the fact that we had uh interviewed uh one of the premier management companies in the Dane County area, uh, Royhan Management and Consulting, uh, Sue Royhan specifically. And uh, that tracking and and that cost has been built in to our uh our number analysis as as part of the monthly cost and of 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 the project. And so uh, we bounced the numbers off of her, off of her, at least as an initial blush and then it's in the ballpark. I uh, I'm not saying we are a hundred percent, but uh it's certainly been vetted in in that respect by someone that has uh experience with this type of a product and with this type of of an approach. So we we have some comfort with that.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Gabrielle?
Just one comment that I made at finance, and I asked some additional questions at finance, um, if anyone's interested in. You both did a great job answering, so thank you so much. This is very thorough proposal, such a great idea. The only thing I'd be interested, I I know that that number three of the open issues to discuss said that they don't recommend any sort of restrictive covenants for the property, but I do think we should consider that because we're investing in these properties, we're investing money in the hope that we can create affordable homeownership opportunities. It would be great to keep those affordable units owner occupied in the future, at least maybe perhaps only for the first reselling of the property. Um, so if there's some way for us to guarantee that that property gets sold to a family that will be occupying the property versus an investment company that will just flip that property and make it another one of those really expensive homes in Fitchburg. Um, it's just something I I think would be worth exploring. Thanks.
Julia?
Yes, I was um following Gabrielle, I thought um uh that if we are doing this as a pilot housing for workforce housing, we should keep it like that way. Um, so, um, and I know that there are some, you know, restriction or it's going to be more difficult to find the funding if we have all these barriers, you know, for the landing of the money, but I think we need to think about that. If we are doing this as a city, we uh, the the purpose of this is uh workforce uh housing and we need to keep it away. And I have the same concern that she has. What happened is, you know, if we have these people that they want to invest and they, you know, they want to convert those housing at the at the end of the period, um, you know, um, and remove the workforce or the affordable uh part of the the project. So the other thing is, I think it's a great idea. We have a lot of discussion at CDA. Um, I also proposed that how we can build a land trust, how CDA can be more, um, you know, um, uh, kind of, um, the champion of this project, and this is a great idea. Um, I, the site for me is critical too. I would like the site to be, uh, we discussed it at CDA and it's, I don't see it here, but the site should be North Fish hatchy road. Uh, we have a lot of multifamily there and we need to bring some diversity of housing there, like a townhouse and ownership. And I will go, uh, my ideal site is will be north of Fish hatchy road. So uh, be because we need to diversify the stock housing in that area. Um, so, but the other, I think it's a great idea. It's a pilot. So we need to think about that. There's going to be another errors. Uh, but because it's a pilot, we are going to learn a lot with the first, you know, batch of houses that we are going to, if we continue with the bu- build. But I think, I think as a city, we are being proactive. We 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 determine that we have an issue about housing in the city and this is a pilot. I am very also, the other thing that I didn't like that I made my comment to see, that was the price tag about this. Three twenty thousand dollar is 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 no affordable housing uh in my language, uh, but um, but this is what it is. The cost of construction has been increasing crazy in the last couple, in the last year, so. But I think we need to keep that as an workforce housing. Um, and then, um, when we move farther to the more the detail, um, is how we are going to do the selection of the people buying, uh, you know, you know, uh, they are going to be participate in this pilot program. It's going to be crucial too. So, but um, that's it. I think it's a, it's a great idea, um, uh, you know, and and I want to approve this, but I think we need to keep in mind that this is a workforce housing pilot program.
Were there people at all? I'll just say two things. One, I think this is kind of was assuming a building something, but it is possible we might find something that is existing that we can buy and renovate possibly, which might even be cheaper than uh building new. So that's another option as well as we look at different options. And I think that I actually like this idea a little better than land banking, only because then, as you replenish, you can then go to another neighborhood and maybe build a, do a project there a little bit sooner. So maybe you start in those for a chance you're old, but then you can go to Ally Drive in South Dale, once that's part of Fitchburg. I think it makes it easier then versus requiring to keep one spot. Yeah, I don't want to stigmatize it either, but you don't want to, I I just like the idea of being able to recoup some of that money and then go somewhere else. And I think one of the things we talk about, something like North Fish hatchy road that we struggle with is we don't have a wide variety of housing. And so if you put this there and you let it kind of sell for market value, now you've got market value ownership property there as well, which I think is really attractive to me because it starts to diversify these neighborhoods even more, which I think is good. Anyway, anyone else? All right, seeing none, then we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can go back to Plan Commission. Nothing to approve. Anything you want to add, Randy?
No, not offhand. Thank you.
All right, I'll just say, uh, council members got the email. Unfortunately, Sonia has found a position outside the city in private, and she was actually recruited by a company away from us, which I don't blame them, even though I do blame them because I don't want to lose her. But uh, unfortunately, she has taken a different job with the ci- uh, within our organization. Will be leaving the city, so unfortunate. Uh, Public Works, Dave?
A move approval resolution R, oh, one eighty-one twenty-one, accepting subdivision improvements for phase two in the plat of Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Sentenced by Jade, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
All right, what's this about?
Uh, well, Crescent Crossing is, uh, you're aware, it's on Seminole Highway. Uh, you see that the new development that's going uh uh on the west side there. And um, I forget how many, exactly how many units were in there. I think Bill might have mentioned thirty, possibly rings a bell. And um, he has reviewed it, uh, all the, everything is uh uh in order and um, and he is uh comfortable with accepting that, the subdivision improvements.
And that's thirty units in this phase?
Yeah, I think it was thirty. It might have been more, uh, but I I thought that was in thirty or sixty. I can't too old to remember all those numbers all the time.
All right, any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, next one.
Next, uh, a move approval resolution R, one eighty-two, uh, one eighty-two twenty-one, authorizing the design contract and budget amendment with uh EOR related to the Cheryl stormwater, Cheryl Drive stormwater improvements.
Second.
Sentenced by Gabrielle, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one, Dave?
So we are having problems, uh, stormwater uh problems with uh area on Cheryl Drive. And so the the firm has identified the fixes. Uh, one is uh um widening out and deepening while the stormwater channels, the other a larger pipe under the road. And uh, we would, we do not have this in our, in our CIP right now. And what we are planning to do is we would use the, we had some contingency leftover from Stormwater Pond uh Seminole that we did. We're going to use that money to fund the engineering for these upgrades. And the reason we want to do this, there's a Cheryl, there's roadwork on Cheryl Drive that's going on planned for next year. We would like, it makes more sense, it costs us less money to incorporate that all in the same um, in the same project. Now, the roadwork isn't in on this, but doing it at the same time will, uh, we won't have to dig up the road twice and that's what we're asking for here.
And is this the area by McKee Farms Park that we've heard about?
This water flows into McKee Farms Park. It can't get there fast enough is the, is the issue.
All right, questions or comments at all? And Julie?
So I want to make a comment that I am glad that we are seeing this moving forward because this neighbor have been having this issue for many, many years and I think, um, you know, I will ask my fellow alder to approve this because, you know, they have been waiting for many years, so.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? That's approved. Anything else, Dave? All right, Park Commission?
Uh.
I move to, oh, should I go with this one?
I move to, oh, should I go with this one?
No, Parks.
Okay.
I am Parks. I move approval of resolution R dash 180 dash 21, approving a contract for teen services and resort facility. It's a community engagement services.
Do you wanna second it, Joe?
Second.
All right, second by Joe, did Park Commission approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you wanna speak to this, Julia, first?
I think we have Wade Thompson.
Wade, all right. Yep, looks like he's at least, there he is. Go ahead, Wade.
Hello, Council. Uh, yeah, I think folks are pretty familiar with the project here. You know, basically the first step in engaging with the community over potential teen center in the Brona Road West neighborhood. So again, first step would be to work with a consultant to really get feedback on, on teen center needs and wants. So we did put out an RFP a couple of months ago. Got one, one bid, one quality bid, had a five-member interview panel, interviewed the consultant. I had unanimous enthusiastic recommendation of approval from the entirety of that interview panel. So based on that, had some discussions with our city administrator, and then was, was directed to proceed with making a, a conditional offer to that firm EQT by design for these, these community engagement services. So, and again, I think kind of a lot of, lot of budgeting going on back and forth over the months, but the gist of it is we have roughly twenty-five thousand dollars of city money, some, some private donations, and then three thousand dollars from the United Way Pittsburgh Fund, which we enacted a couple of years ago. So that pool of money together totals about thirty thousand, I believe, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And just one other point on the resolution. Again, the Pittsburgh Fund was in agreement with United Way to raise money to go towards the HNI. So we did have to tweak that. So we had an MOU with United Way to, to really proceed with that Pittsburgh Fund. So this resolution also does amend that MOU. It authorizes use of those, those funds to go towards this, this study for the, the teen center. So all the i's have been dotted, all the t's have been crossed. So certainly can take any, any questions or comments that the, the council might have.
All right. Julia, do you want anything, or Joe? And I'll get to Dave next.
Yeah, I was on the interview panel and, you know, I will agree that it was a very high-quality proposal. And just given the demographics of the neighborhood, given what the project is intended to do, I think the name is in the, the company that we're hiring EQT by design. They're really equity-focused and their mission really centers on including voices that usually aren't heard in city politics or in any, any other sort of development engagement process. I will also note, if you look in the contract, there is some funding set aside to actually be able to provide stipends to young people to be able to participate. So I think that's a, a definite plus that if, you know, there's a process that's looking into, you know, being for youth, that youth are actually involved in that process. So just wanted to add that note.
Dave?
Uh, just for the public watching, you know, I, I want everyone to wear, this is just for the study. And, you know, the public money that was in there, I did contribute some for the study, but I, I remain very steadfast opposed to a, a two-million-dollar facility moving forward. I, I think we, we can do a lot of great things for very little money, and we'll see what this study does, but I, I will be fighting any one tooth and nail that wants to buy, buy that building and spend a ton of money when we can find better ways to serve our young people.
All right, let's stick to the resolution and the contract. But any other comments, Jim?
Yes, Wade, could you just go over more in depth about the RFP process? And like who's on the panel? Was there a vote? The names of the people on the panel, I think is important since we only got one bid. And, uh, that we go over that.
Yeah, so RFP was issued, again, after staff confirmed, you know, kind of our budgetary parameters. We did issue an RFP, I believe it was in June eighteenth-ish. Left it open for three weeks plus, closed it, I believe, July eighteenth. You know, I did various outreach to try to get that RFP in, in the hands of folks that were qualified and would potentially want to bid on it. So I posted the RFP on our normal city channels, a website called Demand Star, Wisconsin State Journal, city website. And I also sent direct contacts to, again, individuals that I thought, or entities that I thought might be interested in the RFP, and that is allowed per city policy. So just quickly laundry list of who that was. LASUP, which is a, a local Latinx email listserv. The Ally Drive Neighborhood Resource Team contact. And that Neighborhood Resource Team is basically a large group of governmental staff, nonprofit organizations, and, and residents of that neighborhood. Similarly, I sent it to the Leopold, which is essentially the North Fish hatchery road neighborhood, Neighborhood Resource Team as well. So again, you know, governmental staff, nonprofit organizations, and residents from, from that neighborhood as well. And then also sent it to Latino Academy of Workforce Development, and then three individuals, again, that have experience in this area. Sharon Johnson, Annette Miller, and Debbie Biddle. So again, those, that, those contacts were made. We did receive just one bid. Again, of my opinion, a high-quality bid. After that bid was received, I started with the interview process, created a five-member interview panel. Just quickly, those, those members were Emily Born, who was a City of Pittsburgh resident, as well as a member of our city's HNI Grant Review Committee, and also our Plan Commission. Alder Maldonado was on that, the interview panel. Marlon Hannah, who's a police officer with our, our, our police department, was on there as well. And then Ryan Estrella, also a City of Pittsburgh resident, a member of our HNI Grant Committee as well, and also a social worker at a county organization called Joining Forces for Families. And then the fifth member was myself. So again, in my opinion, a very broad spectrum of, of expertise on that, on that panel. So in meeting with the panel, we did create a, kind of a scoring rubric, five or six basic questions. We did ask the, the consultant to also present as part of the interview process. And as a result of that interview, again, I think the committee unanimously felt comfortable with, with making a conditional offer to EQT by design. I did also make it clear to the, the interview panel, we were under no commitment to make an interview offer or to make a, a conditional offer for, for services. Just because they were the only firm, again, we, if we didn't like them, we didn't have to go with them. But again, the, the panel unanimously agreed that they wanted to, to proceed with that, with that group. So again, after that, I, I consulted with the city administrator, made the conditional offer, prepared the draft contract, and that's kind of where we're at, you know, in terms of process for, for tonight.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, or any?
Wade, earlier on the Finance Committee, I, I did ask the same question, but it just strikes me a little bit odd that we've only had one, what I'm calling vendor reach out. Can you explain as to why that may be the case? Or maybe just enhance on that process a little bit? You, you did a great explanation during Finance, so if you could repeat that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I think, you know, generally speaking, I've been a part of, I would say, four to five RFP processes with the city. And honestly, with this one, went above and beyond normal avenues for, for distributing the RFP and getting the word out. You know, I, I think probably the driving factor of this not, not getting more bids was a relatively narrow focus of the project. There aren't a lot of firms in the region that do just specifically community engagement, and there are probably even less firms that are, are really good at it. You know, normally in, in projects like this, we, it's sometimes a broader scale and scope, meaning we've kind of got a design and planning consultant handling facility design, you know, location options. And then there's a subconsultant that would do, you know, more of the focused community engagement. Now, that's one way to handle it, you know, we're handling it different here. We're just strictly doing engagement. And I think that's a, certainly a valid undertaking and a valid way of doing it. But I think the fact that we didn't have that planning design component probably ultimately limited our, our capacity to get, you know, multiple bids. You know, similarly, you know, I have, you know, there are RFP processes. I've gotten two bids, three bids, you know, relatively low numbers. I do believe there's other staff that, you know, with the city that have recently undertaken RFP processes and got, you know, zero bids or, or one bid or two bids. So, and it also is a competitive climate, and I think there's a lot of work out there. So I think those are, they're probably a few of the reasons that we didn't see more than just that one bid.
Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing, then we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, then that is approved. Anything else on Parks?
Yes, I want to share some other stuff. So we all, so the other thing that we did at Parks is we, we discussed, we started with a discussion of the update to the park and open space. So Wade was our facilitator, that the last night we discussed everything related to inventory of the park. So as you remember, we had an open house on September thirty, and it was very well-attended. I came to the meeting also, Alder Kerbarki was here too, and it was a very well-attended meeting. A lot of people brought a lot of ideas about how they want the parks to be, you know, updated. So the other thing that we talked, we talked about this resolution that it was approved, that we just approved. Then we discussed the 2022 operation budget update. Also, the Parks Department is working on the shelter rental fee. So they are working to, to make a fee schedule that is more objective. And they are trying to remove all of the large event fee, but it's still being considered, so we are gonna have a better update soon. Also, we have an update about the Seminole Glen Park update. And then the Stoner Prairie Park planning update. We are planning to seek proposal to help with the design. Thousand dollar, the money is gonna be coming from Parks Improvement, so. What else? And then we have the report from all the, you know, the staff report from Park, Forestry, Recreation, and the Director Report. And, and I will ask you, if you have the opportunity at the time, go and take a look at the staff report because you can see all the stuff that our Parks Department staff are doing with all the constraint of our staffing. So you will be amazed, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Labor Board?
We have no report, although we have a meeting next week.
Excellent. Commissioner Asian Mall?
We have our meeting this Thursday, Thursday morning at eight-thirty, but from the previous meeting, we developed, we approved our mission statement and a vision statement. And I just want to thank Jill, we see in the mayor's budget, part-time social worker that would be in the communities or in the senior center and police halftime, I think that was, and Jill, Jill, Jill was the driving force in getting that, so I applaud her for that. That's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. RCC?
Yeah, so I've got quite a few things. First of all, we, we talked about that Cheryl Drive Stormwater Study that we just passed, but it brought up kind of an interesting conversation about the, how stormwater infrastructure is designed and if it's actually designed for the current weather that we're seeing with higher, higher rainfall events due to climate change. And through that conversation, it came up that Dane County is actually looking at updating its countywide ordinances specifically for rate control, not necessarily directly related to street design, but it's tangentially related. It might cause us to have to update our ordinances, but anyway, it's an interesting note that might be forthcoming as soon as November, but probably more likely in the spring of next year just because county processes can take some time. And then we also talked about R 19021, which is not coming forward today, but it's to set the 2022 solid waste rates. And the plan, the recommendation right now by staff is to bring the race rates up to two, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars per year, which is about a seven percent increase over the previous year, I think. Well, maybe it's close to a five percent, but anyway, it's a significant increase. And we've seen a steady increase over the last few years. RCC was interested to see if we could delay, or, or sorry, to lower that increase so it's not quite as much of a burden. But what was discovered is that that recommendation was based on bringing the fund balance for refuse down to the twenty-five percent, the top of our, our financial policy, which is why it was set at that exact rate based on what's budgeted. The RCC felt that it was important to recommend a lower rate, so they recommended a rate hike to two-seventeen instead of two-twenty, which would dip slightly into the fund balance below that twenty-five percent. It would go down to twenty-four-point-three percent, but they felt strongly that creating a slower increase would be important. So that, that should be noted, noted, and I can bring that up again when that resolution comes forward. And then we wanted to mention that leafs, leaf-free streets is an effort that happens every year with, with RCC, but with the city in general. And basically what that means is that when leaves are in the, the streets and water over, with, do stormwater events, you know, flows over it, it, it takes a lot of this nutrients out of the leaves, which ends up in, into the lakes and the wetlands, and it can create algal blooms. It's quite bad for the, for the environment, and it's one of the things that we try to limit. Our stormwater utility is obviously the infrastructure and controlling the water, but it's also about water quality. It, it's both of those things, it's both of those goals. So we try to encourage residents to keep leaves out of the streets whenever possible. We do have yard waste pickup. We have ability to drop yard waste off at, at our Fish Hatchery Road drop-off site. So there are ways that you can keep it out of the streets on your own and make sure that it gets properly disposed of, but just something to keep in mind. And if you're seeing that any contractors doing that, it'd be worthwhile to contact our stormwater engineer and just let her know that that's happening so the city can be on top of that. Then also, I'm gonna share real quick, because we got those recycling events coming up, which I'm just gonna keep talking about till they happen. And... I don't know if that's sharing. Oh, okay, yeah, it is there. Okay, so the first one is the, the Dane County Clean Sweep Event, Household Hazardous Waste Items. That's on Saturday, October twenty-third, from eight AM to twelve PM. This actually has a fee, it's ten dollars per vehicle, not per person, per vehicle. And they have the list of items that are not accepted, and list of items that are accepted. And then, you know, recommendations on how to prepare it, what type of containers to have, et cetera. And then also, that's gonna be the direction for where it's gonna be. We, it is in Pittsburgh, but it's run by Dane County, so it's open to all Dane County residents, especially since there's a fee involved. But definitely make sure you get your household waste together because we're getting down to the line. Again, that's on Saturday, October twenty-third, on eight AM to twelve PM. And then next up is gonna be the Fall Recycling Event, which is Saturday, November sixth, from eight to eleven AM. That's at the City Hall campus, and it is confidential paper recycling, which will include shredding, electronics recycling, and then also a med drop. And again, there's a lot of specific information about what will be accepted and what won't. Again, the, the electronics recycling, what is accepted. There are some particular items that are complicated for recycling that do have fees. And then med drop is also, and there's instructions about how to use the med drop, how you prepare the medication in order to do that. And then also some more recommendations about what you should not bring to the med drop. So again, that's at the City Hall Campus on Saturday, November sixth, from eight AM to eleven AM. And then I also wanted to point out, just since those recycling events aren't your only opportunity to recycle those types of items, we actually have a recycling guide, it's a PDF available, and it is very detailed. It has advice on almost anything you can imagine, and it will tell you where it can be recycled, or, you know, unfortunately, some of these things can't, so it'll let you know if you should toss it. And then there's also on the website a search. So if you're not, if you don't want to necessarily page through that guide, you can actually search for which items you're interested in and get an answer about what, what to use. And there's some of the more common ones, electronics, mattresses, microwaves, there are instructions for how to go about disposing of those. Oh, and then a couple of small items, the... The calendar for solid waste collection dates will also be coming out soon. That will be printed in the Pittsburgh Star when it is finalized. So keep an eye out for that. And then the, the litter fence that we approved a while back that was installed at the recycling drop-off site, so that is there. And also the cardboard dumpsters have been switched out, and they now include a decal that says cardboard only on them to help with compliance on, on the rules with that. And then last little note, there's a new pond identification signs at several of the stormwater facilities that you might have seen. That is all.
All right. How about TTC?
Yes. Transportation and Transit, we're going to meet on this Thursday, October fourteenth at six thirty PM. And we'll be discussing, um, some of the resolutions that are on the consent agenda tonight, including, you know, approving Pittsburgh to be a tier D direct recipient of transit operating assistance from the state. Um, the, the TPP related to the construction of West Lacey Road from Lacey to Fitchrona, which I know has been of much interest to the public. Um, also the, the intersection of Lacey Road and Seminole Highway, uh, to be controlled by around about that we've discussed in the past, but this is going to be the final resolution. And then also the intersection of East Sherrill and South, South Cyan to be controlled by a protected intersection. Um, so those are all on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Seda, I'm not sure who's going to do Seda tonight.
Okay, so, okay. Put my glasses?
I, I can do it, Jim.
You can do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
I move approval of ordinance two zero two one dash zero dash one four, creating chapter six, article five, division, six, section five, five, seven of the Pittsburgh General, General Code of Ordinance, establishing a healthy neighborhood advisory committee.
Second.
Something about Jay. Did Seda approve? Did Finance approve?
Yes, Finance approved.
All right. And do you want to speak to it, Jim, or do you want me to, or Julia?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll try my best.
All right.
Yeah, basically this goes, um, I'm taking the committee from an ad hoc committee, um, actual to a healthy neighborhood advisory committee. And basically what this does, the commit, um, composition will consist of seven members. One alderperson whose district covers one or more priority neighborhoods, one Seda member, uh, one resident of the city, and four residents of the city that either reside or work in a professional capacity to address socio-economic, um, issues in the priority neighborhoods identified in a healthy neighborhoods initiative strategic plan. A majority of members shall cons- um, constitute a quorum.
And it sounds like there's a few changes from what was originally proposed. Do you want to speak to those?
Well, I'll have to find it. What I was talking about was what those...
Oh, okay. I can speak to it too. Or Julia, you want to? All right, go ahead.
So the, the orig- okay, the original, um, the original that was coming through the, um, so the consent agenda was, uh, they had a different language. It was, uh, only, uh, one alder, uh, and three members from the community. Um, three members from the community, yeah?
No, no, there's, so originally it was one alder and six members from the community.
Uh, six members from the community.
Three from the healthy neighborhoods.
Yeah. And then it went to, uh, the Healthy Neighborhood Ad Hoc Committee. Um, no, first was Seda first. And Seda decided that we want to keep, uh, they want to keep a Seda representative in the, in the committee. Uh, and then, uh, they decided to have, um, you know, one resident and four resident of, um, or that reside or work in the, in the neighbors, that they are under the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. So then it went to Healthy Neighborhood Initiative that we have our meeting, I think, last week. And then the committee was, uh, we have a great discussion, but the committee wanted to, to determine that the, the alder that represent, that it was selected to be in this committee is one from, belongs to one of the district covered, uh, on one or more of the pri- uh, priority neighborhood. Uh, and also we added the Southdale, um, neighborhood that is coming from, uh, the town of Madison. So, so this is why there are four, uh, residents that can work or reside in the city that represent those areas. And the fourth area is going to be the Southdale neighborhood from the south, the town of Madison. So if you look at your package, is what Jim mentioned, is there is a, there were like two changes coming. Uh, Seda amended, and then the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Committee amended again, added some language. So the final version here was amended twice.
All right. Jay and then Jill after that?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with the way this is structured, but I think, um, for clarity, what I would, I would like to make a small amendment, which is to take that section in the middle that says one resident of the city and move that to the end of the list and amend it so it says one resident of the city at large.
Okay.
So that there's just some clarity about
Okay.
what this, what this is trying to say. So that's, and then, you know...
I think we do that as a friendly. That's not changing.
It's not a big deal. It's just something to make it a little more understandable.
Yeah, and I think Jim, are you okay with the friendly? And I think Jill, are you okay with the friendly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I also have one of my own.
Yep, yep. And you're next. So go ahead.
So, uh, two questions. One, with redistricting or the proposed redistricting plans, where are the, what districts are the four neighborhoods going to reside in? I know that two are going to, two of them are going to stay in District One. Um, one, it looks like by the maps would move to District Two.
Yeah.
And then Southdale would probably be in District Three. Am I correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I was going to actually mention that is that three of the four districts are going to have healthy neighborhoods. So you're really just excluding District Four, and I'm wondering if that's necessary to have that. But yeah, you're correct. There's three of the four will have healthy neighborhoods, neighborhoods.
Okay. Um, my next amendment is that I think, uh, what I would like to see is that each of the four neighborhoods has a representative. So if we can amend the language in a way that, you know, when we're selecting members, that we intentionally have one person representing each of those neighborhoods, that would make sense just in terms of, you know, when we're reviewing grants, talking about issues specific to those neighborhoods, that we just have clarity in that language.
Yeah, I, maybe I should speak to like kind of what I originally proposed. And I think you hit on one of the things, Jill, that I want to mention is that really the alder thing, I think it should just be alder because three of the four alder, or districts are going to be with the HNI neighborhoods, assuming we accept the redistricting map. And no one knew that that was the map when you talked about in committees. So no big deal there. So maybe suggest that. And then, um, for the Seda member, I guess I just, I didn't put another Seda member on there because there's some of that in our, our committees, but I wanted to have more at-large residents involved versus, like, again, this kind of cross-population from other neighborhoods. And since it's now on its own, that didn't seem necessary. Because before it was a part of Seda. It had to be. Now it's his own thing. And I'd rather have more potential for at-large residents to be on there than other people who are on other committees. Um, I think, you know, four people instead of three in the neighborhoods, that, that's fine. I don't, that's, that's fine with me. The reason I didn't put one from each neighborhood though is because I worry about restricting it too much. Because I know sometimes we struggle to find people in these neighborhoods. And, and for other things too, I, we have a few things that are restrictive like this. And I just am concerned if it's too restrictive, where you have to have one from each neighborhood versus four from any of the neighborhoods. And it's, I think it's work or lives, so that helps. But I just worry about getting too restrictive where, well, we don't have anyone in Southdale, so is that goal? And so then we have one less person in the committee. That's my concern is that, you know, there's a, there's a neighborhood where, where we struggle to find someone, and now that just says empty. So I guess that's my, I didn't want to put that big of a restriction on it. But it, you know, if it's four residents versus three in the neighborhoods, I mean, that's fine with me. So...
Could, uh, could we have, um, some language about ideal state?
Yeah, I think something...
We'd recommend that, uh, something in parentheses that said, we recommend, um, you know, that, that all four neighborhoods would be represented to the greatest sixth sense possible. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. You certainly don't want all four from the same neighborhood. And I think if you can get it from everyone, that'd be great. Yeah. Julia?
We discussed in the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, uh, Committee last week, we, we discussed this a lot, and we want people, we want the people that they serve in this committee, they understand the needs of the people living in those areas. And this is what, they, they stress out that this is what they add, the language whose district cover one or more priority neighborhood. But also we keep the word, you know, people that live and work in the area, because that one we are giving the flexibility also that maybe we don't find resident that live in the neighborhood, but we have people, and we currently, we have right now a person that who doesn't live in Fitchburg and is part of the committee because he works in one of the, uh, in the North Fish Hatchery Road. So I think we're giving a flexibility with adding, we are not excluding only to be resident, but people who reside could be a resident and also who li- works in that area.
Actually, I just want to clarify. I don't think that's accurate based on what we have right here. That's what it wa- weighs now. But I think what's proposed, from what I understand, and then maybe we need to clarify this, is that it's four residents who live or work in those neighborhoods, but they have to be residents, is my understanding, which is different than what it is right now.
They still have to be residents of the city.
Excellent. Okay.
According to that language, anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, so they had to be, uh...
They have to live in Pittsburgh, but they can, as long as they live or work in those neighborhoods, they would count as one of the four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And really, the at-large person could too. It's nothing to say that person can't, but, okay. All right. Gabriel?
Going back to the alderperson, I mean, I, I know that it's only one of the districts excluded, but I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have one of the, the alder representative represent those neighborhoods. So I mean, I, my preference would be to keep that language, um, because I don't think it's too limiting because it's not just one alder. It's six alders to choose, or not two alders, but six alders to choose from.
I get, I think that that would probably be the case ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. Much like the Hagan Rural Affairs person is usually someone, traditionally has been someone from District Four because that's where most of the rural is. I think is again, that's the preference and the likelihood is it's going to be one of those people. But as soon as you put that restriction on, you know, you, then it starts to become, well, there might be someone who is fantastic in District Four and can't do it. So it's just putting handcuffs on that don't need to necessarily be on there. I would think whoever is sitting in this chair is going to be smart to say, oh yeah, it should be someone, my healthy neighborhood's one.
But I, I want to make a clarification because in the Healthy Neighborhood Meeting, we went through the city, um, committee, and we went to the agricultural committee, and it mentioned there in the language that, you know, the composition, and it's very specific, the composition. So this is what we, when we, we, because we have the concern to, if we add this language, we were, you know, very restrictive. And then we, we look at other compo- the language in other committees, and they are very restricted. That is why we feel comforted to bring that language. Because if you go now to the website and look at the, uh, the ag, um, uh, committee, you will find that there is a language specific there.
But those are for the residents, not for the alders. For the residents, one, I'm not saying that it's a problem having, making for the residents that are on here, live or work in those neighborhoods. It's the alder position, your handcuffing yourself.
People to choose from eight. So, you know what I mean? So it's not like we have only one. If we have one district, I will say, okay, that one is. But we have three districts that are going to have healthy neighborhood areas. So I, I would, uh, because I am, you know, representing the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, and I want to continue with this language.
Any other comments or amendments or anything like that? No, seeing none?
So do we need to vote on these, just to clarify where we stand, or?
Well, the motion right now is that, as it is, is that it's an alder in a healthy neighborhoods district. There is a Seda member, and it's four residents who live or work in the healthy neighborhood, neighborhoods. And then the one at-large pers- person that Jay suggested the, the change for. So that's what it is right now.
Does it also clarify that the ideal is to have one person from each of the neighborhoods?
Uh...
Because I thought that was what Joe...
That could be, of, I think that could probably also be a friendly as a preference for that. Uh, we haven't discussed that.
At the end of that paragraph.
Yeah, so...
Preference.
Yeah, so I think Jay is saying that
Sure.
he's okay with the work friendly of a preference of one from each neighborhood of the four residents. And then Jill, I'm guessing you're okay with that preference language there? All right. Okay. So that's kind of what it is right now.
Kind of.
Sort of. Friendly a little, a little bit. All right. So everyone clear? No comments, changes? All right. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed name? All right. That is approved. Anything else for Seda, Jim? Julian? Nope. All right. Hagan Rural Affairs?
Uh, Hagan Rural Affairs, we have not met since last council, but, uh, the committee for, the broadband committee has met. And, um, that being with city staff and, um, um, Wade Thompson is working on the survey results of mapping out, uh, a, a number of those re- results uh, of, of ru- rural residents. Uh, you, and there's, it was a survey that was sent out, and I think I brought the council up to date on this. Um, but we, I think we walked away from that meeting looking for additional information from Wade, and he was going to continue the mapping. Um, it's been interesting so far to see where services reside within, uh, the Hagan Rural. Um, but we, I guess we were looking for him to fine tune that with some of the surveys that were not, that were not mapped. Wade, do you want to touch on, touch on any of that, or, uh, if you're there?
I knew I should have laughed after the, uh, the HNI discussion. No, no, Randy, you summed it up, uh, really well. Yeah, just, um, with workload, have it, been able to finish this, the survey mapping. Uh, we did get some surveys come in after the, the deadline date, but we still want to get those mapped. But yeah, I would say next week plus, we'll get all that stuff mapped out. We'll kind of have a final draft, um, mapping product that reflected survey results, and then certainly can talk about, you know, next step. So...
Yeah. I do have to comment that he's done a fabulous, great job up to this point. I mean, it, uh, it's some great information. I don't know if, Aaron, you're, you were there, uh, but have been. I don't know if you want to comment further?
No, I think it's great. I think it's good to see where we have some gaps in the city and where we might want to look to try and encourage services to go to make sure all residents have broadband.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, moving on to EMS, Shannon?
Got to turn on my mic. Sorry. Um, um, nothing really, uh, except for we have a meeting on Thursday, and instead of seven o'clock, it's at five thirty. That's about it.
All right. Bicycle Committee?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, question?
When is the budget meeting with EMS that we used to have together? Do you know that date?
Actually, check that.
Uh, that hasn't been set yet. I got a notification from Fitchrona, uh, whether or not the preference was an in-person, uh, or virtual, uh, option. So I responded that we would be fine with either.
Okay.
So once, uh, they got a response from both the City of Verona and the Town of Verona, they were going to look to get that scheduled. So I'll be sure to make sure that folks have that. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think it sounds like they're doing a little different than previously. Previously, they do it at their October meeting, but it sounds like they're going to do it as a special meeting then, sounds like, since it's not, we haven't got anything that's next week. So... All right. Uh, Bicycle Committee, Jill?
Uh, met on the fifth. Couple, um, agenda items we covered are, um, just to update that the, um, Cannonball Trail has been opened, um, thanks to the sewer construction that's finished. Um, moving towards, um, gold, uh, bike, bike-friendly, um, status. And, um, updates on bicycle data collection, just looking into different options for counters. So we didn't finalize any decisions, but, uh, Phil presented some options for different counters for different points throughout the city. And we just weighed in on, uh, where the appropriate places to put them in, uh, and also kind of which counters would give us the best bang for our buck. Um, not necessarily looking for something as expensive as, and elaborate as some of the ones you see in Madison. Um, kind of more cheaper options so that we can afford multiple data collection points. Um, and then obviously you've heard some of the updates on the, um, change in our registration process. And that is about it.
All right. Thank you. And then actually just EMS chat as a quick update?
Yeah, I wanted to go back through a couple of emails real quick to confirm that, uh, a date had or had not been established. And it does appear a date has been established for October twenty-first. I do not have a time for that. Uh, since that is, is going to be virtual, um, Scott will be sending out invitations to all alders, uh, and council members. Uh, that was the request that went out to Scott. So at some point, uh, you should look for an email from him, and then you can register to attend that meeting.
Well, it sounds like Shannon said it's five thirty. Is that right? Next Thursday? Yeah. So it's five thirty.
I mean, that was the, that was the last email that I got, but it looks like it may, you know, I don't know. I think it's five thirty. I hope so.
We will verify. We will verify. Oh, five-thirty is finance. Seven o'clock is the actual meeting, five-thirty is finance.
Our meeting is at like, yeah, but for us two, in order to get into our seven o'clock meeting, we have to go into the five-thirty meeting too, so for me, it's the whole thing, sorry.
All right, so the rest of us, seven PM, if you can make it, will be available online, and we'll get that from Fact TV. All right, excellent. Uh, Tree Advisory, Gabriel?
Tree Advisory is meeting on this Thursday, October fourteenth, at four PM, and we'll be discussing the park and open space, a plan, and then also, uh, the tree preservation ordinance.
All right. Uh, Landmass Preservation, you have a meeting planned yet, Shannon?
No, nothing yet.
All right. How's the advisory?
Uh, all my stuff's been dealt with.
All right. Sounds good. Healthy Neighborhoods, Joe?
I am there.
No, I'm sorry, sorry, Healthy Neighborhoods, Joe Housing, sorry.
You said Healthy Neighborhoods or Housing?
Housing, sorry.
Okay, um, no updates for me.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods, you're taken care of, all right. Good? For what, the Healthy Neighborhoods? Oh, all right.
Okay, so the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, we met October seventh, um, so, uh, Jay couldn't be there, so can I give an update? So, um, so we discussed, you know, the ordinance that we just approved, and the other thing is we discussed with, um, Wade about the twenty-twenty-one grant program update. Um, Dave is doing a great job, because he's checking with all the non-for-profit organization to, to have like, um, mid-year, uh, review of what they're doing, uh, with, um, the funds that we provide them, and the, you know, um, what they're doing in this, in the, in the area. The other thing is that we are trying for next year, for the twenty-twenty-two grant program, i- is to have like, uh, Wade is trying to work with, if we can do everything and have an online application, because now everything is on paper, so it's going to be, it's an improvement to the application. And, you know, every year, we are trying to modify and add some, uh, items, and how to make that process more efficient and streamlined. So, uh, I hope we can do for the twenty-twenty-two, we have the online application, um, so that one is going to be great, uh, because it's going to be improved also staff time too. Um, what else? And then, uh, the other thing is, we are still have an open pos- one of the navigator, um, got a full-time position, so we are still looking for another navigator, um, to fill out, um, the position. Um, and then we have an update on the hub, um, and, uh, the, you know, the city, uh, applied for a couple of grants for the hub, uh, phase one. Um, the only thing that we are moving forward is with the CDBG, the county CDBG. Um, we applied for a hundred forty thousand dollar, I think we are nominated for a hundred thousand dollar for a second phase, so I, so that one is a plan, and we didn't have any luck with the other grants, so. But there are more grants there, we are going to try to go to Luca Foundation, so, but yes, so that's it.
All right. Uh, Redistricting Committee, Randy?
Uh, redistricting, we, uh, met last week, uh, Monday evening, or Monday afternoon, uh, October fourth. Uh, we also met Wednesday and Thursday of last week. Um, Wade Thompson presented a number of options for us, I should say, a number, there were three options. And, um, from those three options, we, we made some adjustments. We voted on which options we preferred, and kind of narrowed it down, and then, uh, we made some further tweaks. Uh, we came up with option one A, and then option one B. Um, lots of discussion, and, uh, made some additional tweaks, and we finally came up with a, a final, final version. Um, and I believe, uh, maybe Tracy sent those out this afternoon.
Yep. It was in, we referred it out as well, so it's also in the packet, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, just trying to think, there was, there was just a lot of good discussion, and, um, uh, Wade had a great program that was provided from, uh, the state that we could actually manipulate here, manipulate based on the census tracts to the Aldermanic district, districts or wards, and then to the districts themselves, so, um, there was some flexibility. And what else?
You want to talk about polling locations?
Oh, yes, the polling locations. Polling locations, uh, are being pulled back into each of the original districts, so.
Same locations, but put them actually in the district.
The districts where they're polling.
Voting in your district now.
Yeah, you won't have to leave your district to vote. Um, and you were, you were there, I mean, anything, additional thoughts, I mean, um...
I think the, you know, there's two things, District One had to get bigger, because the city grew a lot.
Right.
But it was in other districts, so we did have to make District One, at least recommended, to be bigger. Um, you know, obviously, also trying to figure out what do the Town of Madison, where that should go, and we are limited a little bit by our census tracts, and so you can't just put a line on any street you want, but you're trying to balance out the districts as much as possible, and keep it within a certain, you know, limit. So, you can see the map up there right now. Uh, District One is the same district right now, except it added one neighborhood from District Two in it, and then District Two lost that one, but it gained two more along North Fish hatchery road that had been in District Three, so they grew a little bit more to the north. And then District Three, uh, lost Quarry Hill neighborhood, but it added Terabessa, and will add the, uh, Town of Madison as well, and then District Four, you know, it's kind of from there. It hasn't, it added Quarry Hill, and then, um, lost, you know, Terabessa a little bit on the west, but District Four is still primarily the rural, uh, part of the city. Um, other than that, you know, I think, like Randy said, we're changing, the polling locations are the same, but changing which district goes to which one, so it's actually, makes a little more sense than what it does right now.
Right.
Uh, Tracy, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, I think you guys have covered everything.
All right, Chad, anything you want to add?
Uh, I do want to add that I agree with Randy's assessment, that there was a lot of, uh, very good, uh, thoughtful input from the committee members, I think, uh, the committee members for their service, uh, in contributing to the options that were covered. And, uh, I do also want to mention, there were actually, uh, a total of four options initially considered by the committee, uh, which was narrowed down to a, a preferred option of number one, uh, which led to a creation of option one A, and then, uh, the final map was a creation of option one, was referred to as one A B. So, in total, uh, six options were considered by the, the group, uh, which I think, um, was a bit surprising that we were able to come up with six options, based upon the limitations that we have, uh, by regulation, i.e., uh, trying to create districts, Aldermanic districts, that have generally equal, or at least as equal population as possible. Uh, that target number was seven thousand seven hundred and fifty residents, uh, per Aldermanic district, uh, and that number was, uh, utilizing the one thousand three hundred and ninety residents, uh, from the Southdale neighborhood that will be coming in to Fitchburg next year, uh, as it relates to District Three's, uh, population beginning in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the other things that we were obviously working with, as, as has been mentioned, is a requirement to utilize census tracts for boundaries, uh, for the most part. Uh, the mapping software that was provided, uh, you know, was clear in the areas in which we could make, move ward boundaries and so forth. So, um, there really is very little ability for, uh, staff and/or committee members to really deviate from that software, in fact, there's no, uh, ability to deviate from what it allows you to draw. And then the other thing, uh, that we looked at is, uh, from the requirement standpoint, is, is, um, two things, actually. Uh, the county supervisory district boundaries also had to be taken into consideration, uh, for our ward boundaries, so that there was no, uh, wards overlapping the county supervisory district boundaries, of which, uh, it appears as though the county is, is, uh, recommending option C out of the eight options that were presented at the county level. And then finally, uh, we were required to have a population range between six hundred and twenty-one hundred in each of the particular wards. So, a lot of, uh, different parameters that we had to work with. I, uh, certainly not only, uh, should recognize, obviously, the committee members, but both, uh, Tracy and Wade for their work, uh, as well as Valerie, uh, in, uh, working through all of the descriptions that are necessary for the ordinance updates as well. So, again, uh, we dealt with a highly, highly compressed timeline, uh, based upon the delay in the census, uh, information. It clearly was not ideal, uh, without a doubt, um, but unfortunately, that was, uh, clearly the hand that we were dealt, uh, this go-around, so, uh, I think overall, uh, we were able to come up with a ver- a, a good variety of options to consider, and then you see, obviously, uh, the option that has been, uh, moved forward by the committee there.
All right, I have, uh, Gabriel, and then Julie after that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with the Town of Madison annexation, that there's those, there's, there's a section on North Fish Hatchery Road. Is that going to go into District Three?
I would imagine that'd be District Two, since it's on the west side of Fish Hatchery Road.
Is that the general plan, or? Oh, it doesn't have any residents?
No, it's all business.
It's all business, and yes, it would go into two, would be the plan.
Great, thanks.
Julie?
I want to ask you a question about, do you receive any other feedback from the community beside the, the, the members of the committee? Do you receive any emails, or people come to talk to you about if any public input?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll obviously let, uh, have Mayor Richardson answer that question directly, but I, I'm glad you brought that up, because we do have that section on the website, and I was going to cover this during the update. Um, we are in the process of getting all six of the map options that were considered by the committee up onto the website. Uh, we are also going to identify that anyone wishing to provide feedback can email Tracy, uh, directly, uh, with that feedback, and then, obviously, we'll identify that option one A B was the, the map that was recommended, uh, by the, um, by the committee. And then we can certainly also mention for the group here, and for anybody watching, all of the meetings of the redistricting committee were televised, uh, by Fact TV. They are available for viewing, if you want to go back and review any of those, and we can also look to try to get a link to those, uh, meetings out on the, the city website, on that page as well.
Okay, so, no, can I follow up, can I, want to comment? I, I, you know, I appreciate that you're going to make all of those map pub- public, um, because I, I was really concerned about, I know that there are something that we couldn't control, like the sensor delay and all of that, but the lack of public, uh, participation for me was, is, is huge, you know what I mean? Because, um, this is a process where we want all our residents to participate, and, and this is not going to be that, you know, because they have the public hearing, the night that we are going to vote, but... So, the idea is how we can now continue outreach in the public and say, you can still make your comments, you know, bring your comment to public hearing, um, you know, so, because the, the thing if we publish in the, in the website is one thing, the second thing is how we, how we make the people aware that that information is in the website, is key. And I think we need to do a better job as a municipality in outreach in our resident.
I encourage people at any time, sir, give feedback to any of us up here, frankly, not just myself, or Chad, or any of you. If they're looking at maps, have questions, comments, they don't need to wait until the meeting on the second, by any means, I mean, say, anytime. Uh, which reminds me, Tracy, do we have a time for a special meeting on the second? I know you'd sent out a poll. Do we have a time when that's going to happen?
Uh, right now, we're looking at a time of about six-thirty, but I'm waiting for a couple more people to, um, fill out that doodle poll that I sent out. Um, and just to let everybody know that the maps are updated on the website, so all of the options, uh, that we looked at are on the website now, as well as my email address.
All right, so please fill out the doodle poll if you haven't, and then make sure you fill out all the times possible, just so we can find something that works for all, Jay?
There's one change I would like to make to the map, which doesn't really affect anything, but it might make things easier for people looking at it, and that is those two pieces of the Town of Madison, um, that are coming into Fitchburg. Can we, like, shade those red and green, or put crosshatches through them or something, just so it makes, so it's more clear to people? I don't know how fine we can get in changing, you know, I don't know how the software is set up, but if we could do something to show where those are going to end up, I think that might make it a little easier for people looking at this map.
Yeah, like a red stripe for the, those Fish Hatchery Road, and green stripes for the Park One, District Three, I think.
Yeah, I can talk to Wade about that.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. All right, Gabriel?
Uh, but just to clarify, so, we'll, we'll have our public, well, so I watched as much of the meeting as I could. I couldn't watch every minute, but I watched quite a bit of it, um, and I think that the discussion was really good. I think the discussion reflected what I imagined the public input would be. Um, and I, you know, although I understand the compressed timeline, and I understand reality is what reality is, it was disappointing that we didn't have those, that public input, um, even though I do believe that the discussion was, was good. My question is, though, i- if we do have problems with the maps, there is no opportunity to make a change at this point, right? I just wanted to clarify that, like, there is no, even though we're going to discuss it and, and, and adopt it next week, there's no actual functional way for us to make an update, is that right?
I guess the problem is, if you watch the meetings, you know, probably, especially if you watch the Thursday meeting, once you change one line, there's a cascading effect of everything changing, because we were looking at, you know, a few different things, and, uh, we were looking at the Quarry Hill area, and, um, Waterford Glen, you know, that's kind of where that biggest question was for the committee. And once you change one thing, there's this cascading effect where, all of a sudden, you maybe aren't able to keep everything within ten percent of population, or it's not a condensed thing, and that's where, I think, you know, if there's a request to change a, a line, I, I, I want to say that there's no choice, but the problem is that there's this cascading effect, and to try and figure out, okay, if you move this, and you have to move this, then you have to move that, and you have to move this here, it, it doesn't work well in person, but, so, the options would be pretty limited. Uh, Randy, why don't you speak to that?
Well, yeah, ju- just, just to elaborate on that, we really tried to keep neighborhoods intact as well. I mean, even Aaron and I had a little bit of disagreement on, on, on one, a couple of different neighborhoods, and, uh, I mean, he made a very valid point, and, um, and I think the committee accepted it, but, I mean, we worked very hard to keep those neighborhoods together, so we weren't splitting them, and somebody on one side of the road, and another, they were voting in different directions, and, um, yeah, I, I just, uh, I just wanted to make that point.
And I think, uh, another thing too, and not that this should matter, but all people on council are still in the same district.
Yes.
It's not something we tried to do, it just hasn't worked that way, but if anyone's curious, that's the case as well. Julie?
Um, can we have the map printed bigger, because we can see the, the street? Because in our district, like, my district changed a lot, so I want to be sure where exactly District One start. I was reading the packets that, uh, Tracy sent this afternoon about to, you know, the walls and the street, and it's, I was, you know, I need, I am more like a visual person, and I want to be sure that, you know, especially in District Two, that you have split the Seminole Hills, you go to D-one and Harlem Hills, but where exactly? I would, I don't know, if we can see like, the street name in a bigger map, I don't know.
It's, it's already on Wade's radar, so, uh, on Wade, uh, he's looking...
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
The, the mapping software that this was drawn on is the state software, so we, we were obviously very limited with time constraints to get one with all of the roads or streets, or at least many more of the streets on there. So, it is on Wade's, uh, uh, to-do list, uh, to work with our, uh, one of the folks that does some GIS work for the city, to get a map, uh, that is, is a bit easier to read with street names. So, that, that is hopefully, uh, going to be ready by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of things missing on that map. I mean, Street Alavan isn't on there, along with the number of other ones on south of Lacy Road, so.
Well, I guess you just can't vote then.
I guess I'm out of the city. All right, uh, Gabriel?
Is there, so, I, I consider these, there to be some very significant changes, at least in D-one, D-two, and D-three, but also D-four. And almost everybody will have a different polling place, maybe, except, the exception of North Fish Hatchery Road, yeah.
D-one will be the same, but...
Uh, so, what is the pub- is there a plan, or will be there be a plan for public outreach to communicate these changes?
Yeah, there's some requirement things that we have to do, and maybe Tracy can speak to those, but obviously, we're going to be putting this, I would hope, in our article, and it's Fitchburg Star. We'll work with the Fitchburg Star, hopefully, they're doing an article about it as well. Um, Fact TV will do something, some of those traditional things. Tracy, do you want to speak to the required? I think we have to send a postcard to everyone, don't we?
That's correct, and I do have it in the budget, that everybody will receive a postcard notifying them of their polling location change, except for the ones that are not affected in District One.
Chad, you want to add anything?
No.
All right.
One question with Tracy, so the postcard is going to go only to the people that are affected?
Only affected, if they change, yep.
Oh, but the question is, like, in District Two, we vote in the fire station here, the whole district is going to be voted, yeah.
Yep, you would all get one, because you're voting at a different location, even though it's the same district, you're voting at a different location, so...
And how in advance we are going to send those postcards?
There's requirements for that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's like 30 or 60 days, something like that. Gabriela?
For, I'm just thinking of North Fish Hatchery Road, where they're technically voting in the same location, but they're in a different district now. Are they going to be notified as well?
Tracy?
Sorry, I couldn't find my mouse. Yeah, they'll be notified as well.
Okay, so, if there's no change in polling place, no change in district, they won't be for that small group that isn't, and then, for everyone else, either a change of district and/or a change in polling place will trigger a notification?
That's correct.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, moving along to finance, Randy?
Okay, finance met this evening at 5:30. We approved approval bills, detailed review of all checks issued, checks number 122567 through 122612, for the period of September 16th through the 30th, 2021, totaling $1,725,248.93. The next approval of bills was the detailed review of all ACH payments for the period of September 1st through the 30th, 2021, totaling $496,605.49. Next item, motion to approve Resolution R-172-21, police squad car replacement purchase, which was postponed from the September 28, 2021, meeting.
Second?
Something by Jay, did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is, this came before, let me back up here to my own notes here. As I said, mentioned earlier, this came around back in September, but it was postponed because we were waiting for, I believe, the insurance coverage on it, if it was going to be totaled or not, and from my understanding, speaking to Misty today, that notification came through, but this is squad number six, squad card number 1619, and it's on a five-year replacement schedule, and it was due for replacement in 2021, so...
The only unfortunate thing is that we're going to have assessing use that, and they're not going to use it anymore, because it's totaled, so...
Right.
Next year, there will be another one that comes in, so, they'll have that one, assuming that one doesn't get totaled at the last second either.
Yep.
Any questions, Gabriela?
Just wanted to make, just another note, that the assessing department, we're still doing that transfer of money, even though they're not technically buying the car right now, just because they have overages currently, that they might not have next year, so, we're going to, they're still going to transfer that money, even though they aren't buying the car, in the anticipation of buying one next year.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that's approved personnel.
So, we haven't met yet, but we are working with Sarah in a equitable hiring tool to work in the, for the replacement of Sonia, for the plan director, so, we'll see what it is.
All right, public safety, anything?
Two things, we approved two operator licenses tonight, and also, the Promega, the new building, they're having an open house for their employees, and have a party on October 28th, and from 3:00 to 7:00, and there will be fireworks after the, after the party from 7:00 to 7:15, so, everyone likes fireworks.
All right, going on to Mayor's Report, you got two things. One, I kind of mentioned this earlier, at the entrance to City Hall here, we did put a pink kind of filter over that light for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and there's a few other months that I know have something similar. I believe there's a green one for veterans, and I think there might be a purple one for pancreatic cancer, so there's a few that I think we're going to try, assuming we can fix the light, which that should happen soon, but I thought it was just kind of a good way to show our support for some of those causes. There's three or four of them that are kind of most common, but open to ideas, if you see, if you have any of those. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention is, I think I've talked about the mayoral awards that I started a few years ago, a third one this year, it's going to be October 25th at 5:00 here, and the council chambers, we'll have some cookies individually wrapped for people, anyone's invited in the public, and we're going to have the three award winners like we have in the past. One is a citizen, and the winner, or the person I'm recognizing this year is Greg Jones, who many of you know, he's been in PFC, he's helped with a number of other city committees, but he's also done a lot of work with NWSACP, and I think a few other things, so he is the citizen I'm recognizing. The businesses, business that I'm recognizing is Pittsburgh Family Pharmacy in Bad Shit Marker. He's done just a ton of stuff here in the community, supporting a lot of charities, supporting a lot of city events, helping with COVID, and flu shots, and tons of things, he's, just does a great job here in the community as well. And then, the staff recognition is, I'm recognizing Fact TV for all the things that they do for everyone in the city, you know, just through COVID, and making sure that meetings are accessible, the hundreds and hundreds of events that they go to and cover every year, to really make sure that people in the community have a way to get information, talking Pittsburgh every day, so I think, you know, all three of those are really valuable parts of the city, so, you can join me in recognizing them on the 25th, it's a Monday night. Monday at 5:00, here at the council chambers.
IGM, okay.
So...
Could you send that in an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have, maybe Lisa send that out at our meeting thing. All right, Alder reports, we start District Three, Jay?
Oh, good, I have things. Sine Road is going to be closed from October 19th to October 26th, between Lacy Road and Irish Lane, and that's, it's usually a pretty well-traveled road, there's a lot of people from Oregon who cut up through, and it's, so it's going to create a little bit of havoc for about 10 days. I don't know how many of the council members were able to attend the Town of Madison, City of Madison informational meeting on September 15th. If you did not watch it, or hear it, you need to, and every department head in the city of Pittsburgh needs to watch that meeting, because they are so, so, so far ahead of where we are, with keeping their residents informed, and probably even understanding how this is going to work. I listened to that meeting, and I was just astounded at how many questions were asked that they could answer right away, that I don't think anyone on our staff could answer at all, right now. So, we need to get into high gear on this, so I suggest that we have staff watch that meeting, start to get up to speed on things like this, and we need to hold some kind of meeting for the 1,500 residents that are going to become part of our city in just a little over a year. Also, imagine my surprise when I'm sitting there this afternoon, minding my own business, and a news story pops up in my email, and the news story is about how the city of Madison is now working, apparently with the Town of Madison, to lease the fire station that we are going to acquire on October 22nd next year for zero rent. So, we, it's right in the State Journal, I'll send you the link to it if you want. I would suggest that our legal department should look over that, see what's in the agreement, because my understanding is they can't just do that without our permission, and, you know, we were, I suspect, at the time that we did this, I don't know how much discussion has been held since then, but since this building isn't going to be in the city of Pittsburgh, our thought was that we would sell it at the time that we acquire it, and if we've got a zero-rent lease with the city of Madison, that's going to make it awfully difficult to sell, so, I think we need to figure that out, and have a, have a little discussion about that, because this shouldn't be popping up like this in the news media before we even know about it. That's not how this transition's supposed to be happening, and that's all I had.
Yeah, I can't imagine that they could do that for beyond next October, but, all right, we'll look into that. Shannon?
I only had the update of the traffic, and Jay covered it. Thank you, Jay. I don't have any other, anything else to add.
All right, Jim?
Nothing to add.
All right, Randy?
Yes, I was talking with Sue yesterday, and prior to, prior to the meeting, and she has sent out an email that you may all have received, I know several alders have participated already regarding the aster rescue, that is in the lots, lots 53, 54, that's going to be developed next, next year, this is between McKee Farm Park and off Wilshire, and anybody that's interested in rescuing the native aster plant this Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 to 12:00, they're looking for, for help to dig up and remove, and move them, relocate them to another city park, and she did ask that you bring a clean shovel, so she's got clean, all caps, so I'm guessing that's so that there's no invasive plant that's brought in, I'm not sure, but this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00, and on this Sunday, from 10:00 to 12:00.
All right, thank you. Joe?
Couple of updates, there is a series of bike fixing events that are being held by Dream Bikes, as well as the Wisconsin Bike Fed, it's right outside of Luna's Groceries, it's going to be the next Tuesday, as well as the Tuesday after that, from 4:00 to 6:00. Alder Herbst and I are also set to meet with Andrew McFadden to talk about traffic-related safety concerns, so we will keep the public updated as we learn more and discuss with Public Works. All right, guys?
All right, Dave?
Tonight, I wasn't able to, the City of Madison or the Parks Department hosted a kind of a community building event in the Western Hills Park tonight, it was from 4:00 to 7:00, I believe. Let's see, Joe mentioned we're meeting with Andrew on Monday, and something else, oh, yeah. We were, we were helping with the asters, and Willie and I had helped, our Jamestown Eagle Park, two weeks ago, was like a postcard, our natural area over there, with the yellow flowers, and the asters, and looking up towards Williamsburg Way and the trees, it's past the peak now, but I just want to mention, next year, anyone get a chance, it's like a wilderness picture, picture there. A little bit of a negative note, last two weeks, we've had shootings in our neighborhood, the 4,400, 4,500 of Sentinel Pass, and on Sunday, one right at Williamsburg Way by the old PDQ. I rode my bike by there about a half hour before it happened, my car, well, 15 minutes, or before, and then my car 15 minutes after it happened. I've gained lots of calls, people are saying, we do not feel safe in our neighborhood, you know, this is, they're spraying bullets down the street, here someone shot right in the middle of the district. Our residents are scared, and they're, they're reaching the boiling point with this, with this going on. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Julia?
So, some of the information I already shared about what we are doing in Lot 53 and 54, I want to thank Sue Easterday, because she's doing a great job, you know, gathering all the volunteers, and moving the plants, and then, they're looking where to replant the native plants, so, it's a lot of work and coordination, so, so the other thing I want to mention is, tomorrow, we are having a meeting, oh, you were going to mention that? Okay, tomorrow, we are having a meeting with the Floran and Lyman neighbors to discuss the project, so it's going to be here at the city, the chamber is online, and it's going to be at 6:00, 6:00 to 7:00, okay? And then, on Monday, October 18, there's going to be another discussion in the Public Works Committee about the second phase for the Cheryl Drive project, okay? So, that one is going to be in the, in that meeting. I don't know if an engineer is going to come, or Bill, but, so, I want to invite the neighbors from Cheryl Drive, for sure, we are going to send a notification to them that it's going to be the second, discuss the second phase about the project. And then, I also met with a couple of neighbors this weekend about Floran Drive issues. Tomorrow is the Hispanic Heritage Luncheon, organized by La Movida Radio Station, I will be participating also, helping with the declaration. What is, and also, I want to mention something, it, I don't know if some of you, I receive the In Business magazine every month, and I want to share something with you, this is more economy development, about the September edition was the 100 largest employers in the county, and we have a couple of companies here, like Promega, Simbri, Grace, Thermo Fisher, Serco, Playcon, Try North Builders, and Golden Flesh, and Saris Cycling Group, so, it's great to see them there, but most of them use the Madison instead of Pittsburgh. Then one was kind of, some of them use Pittsburgh, but Promega used Pittsburgh, but, you know, but it's great to see some of our, some of our biggest, the biggest employers in the county, we have kind of like a handful of companies here, so that one is great, so, what is, that's it for now.
All right, Gabriela?
One thing, I've been trying to do some explanations of the budget, and how to navigate the budget on my blog, on my website, gabrielleguyhart.com, so if anyone's interested in guidance on how to navigate it, that exists there, and in long term, I would love the city of Pittsburgh website to have a blog space for alders to communicate with the public, but that's a conversation for a future day, but I did want to let everyone know, while all the alders are here, that last year, I hosted some blog posts on my website for any alders that wanted to explain their amendments to the public, in a kind of more long form, and that offer is open to anyone this year that has amendment, I'm happy to host that on my website, and you'll have a link, and you can share it out, whomever you please, and I can put a social media image for you, whatever you'd like, so, that is an open offer for all of the alders that are submitting amendments. Thanks.
All right, thank you. No unfinished business, two items and new business that are related, someone, Randy, finance, do you want to make a motion on the first one here?
Under the direct referrals?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to approve Resolution R-197-21, adopting the 2021 sick leave use MOU with the WPPA. Finance?
Hold on, any second?
Yep.
Second?
Something by Jay? All right, did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this? You want Chad, too? You want...
Chad, he's probably more averse with it.
So, this resolution and the one following in regards to the agreement or MOU with the fire union are all very similar, in fact, are the same. So, with COVID, obviously, the city has adopted a number of new policies related to its response to COVID, and trying to keep its employees as healthy as possible, and our work continuing to be done. One of the things that the city has, a policy that has been extended to all non-represented employees, is to allow employees who are experiencing symptoms of COVID, or otherwise have been tested positive for COVID, or fit into one of the, you know, the four criteria that's listed in the referral sheet, which I'll spur you to reading that, the ability to utilize sick leave that they will earn during 2021, if they do not have enough sick leave currently to cover their absence related to COVID. So, because the union contracts did not have language that allows this, we wanted to extend this benefit to our union-covered employees, and therefore, an MOU is required in order to do that. So, that's what these, this MOU with the WPPA covers, our police union, and the MOU with the IAFF. the IAFF covers the collective bargaining agreement with the fire department in the next resolution.
Any questions at all?
This only covers an illness, this only covers COVID-19 related issues, okay.
All right, seen nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, next one, Randy?
Yes, motion to approve Resolution R-198-21, adopting the 2021 sick leave use MOU-IAFF.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did finance approve this?
Finance approved.
All right, so like, you know, Chad said, same thing, this is just the firefighters' union, so.
Correct.
Same thing for them. Seen no questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That is approved, next council meeting's in two weeks, next can be the whole is two weeks and a day, and that's when we will be discussing any amendments that get submitted. Chance to have a big thorough discussion, because then the next council meeting after that, the first one in November, we will vote, and in theory, the discussion is limited. It's supposed to be limited, you're supposed to have all discussion at the committee of the hall, but I know that doesn't necessarily happen. So we will discuss any amendments at that point in time. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sent by, sent by, I'll say Joe. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you.